Good evening, everybody. This meeting is now called order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Bravoni?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, first item on the agenda is at least one special presentation. So we'll start off with Communities and Schools' Annual Report. Sue Perrow.
There we are. Okay. Technology. Okay. Love it. Well, thank you very much for giving me this time to address you. My name is Sue Perrow. I'm the Executive Director of Communities and Schools of Renton. It's been over a year since I've been here. I came when Mara did the mentor program, but as far as my update, it's been a while. You have some new faces. We've had some changes, so I thought it was time that we kind of reconnected and updated you on what's going on. And I'm gonna, because of a couple of new people, I'm going to kind of touch on some of the basics as well. Communities and Schools is the most effective dropout prevention program in the nation, serving 1.5 million students across 26 states. It's data-driven, evidence-based, research-proven, multiple evaluation and studies around the effectiveness, and the largest provider of what we call integrated student supports. And as I explain what we do, that is kind of the basis of it. It's proven to decrease dropout rates, increase graduation rates, increase math and reading achievement, and increase student attendance. There's also another study out around return on investment that says that for every dollar invested in the program, $11.60 is the return to the community, a rather sizable investment. Communities and Schools of Washington, our state network, is the fourth-largest state network in the nation, serving just under 64,000 students. And there's some, whoops, why? This is the part I forget, is "the." Click "the" screen so the audience can see also. So you have some of the impact numbers, but what's significant is in the last few months, we've opened two new affiliates. We're trying very hard to reach out around the state. We have a new affiliate in Mount Vernon, in one school, and in Richland, they open nine schools with the CIS program. Are you coming to my rescue?
Just gonna come.
I love it.
Just ignore me.
Easy. So the need, the need is surely there. What we also know is in the last six or seven years, the number of students we serve statewide has increased by 22,000 students each year. But, as good as that is, the other side of that is the number of students on free and reduced lunch has increased threefold. So as much as we're increasing, we're not even keeping pace with the rate of free and reduced lunch. So we have our work cut out for us. The next page you have is our diagram of the CIS model, and I'm just gonna touch on some of the points there. We put a person, a site coordinator, in the school to work with a school team to assess the needs of the school, to develop an annual site plan that lays out what the services will be for the school, and then we provide two levels of service. One is school-wide services, like school supplies for all the students, or community resources, or college career information that all students have access to. We also then provide a level of service for individual students, targeted students, and our average caseload is 50 to 100 students. CIS says that we need to do 10% of the student body, and elementary, 500 kids, so it's a pretty big caseload. But it's really important that we're providing these multiple services to the students and the families. An average student might be on the Weekend Food Backpack Program, they might have a mentor, they might, their family might be getting some other basic needs services. We would be checking on their attendance and their academics all along the way. We set goals for every student, and then we track against some outcomes and metrics to make sure that they're maintaining or improving on academics, attendance, and behavior. And then we set about brokering the services. In Renton, as you know, there's a huge need for the students. 25% of the students in the school district do not graduate, and if you look deeply into the numbers and the ethnic groups, 35% of the African-American students and 35% of the Hispanic students do not graduate. That's the students that we focus on. Poverty is a prominent risk factor here, and it's a focus of our work. Children in poverty, we know to have lower math and reading scores, more likely to repeat grades, and three times more likely to be expelled from school. So we focus on the non-academic barriers to student performance. We work in the school with the teachers to know who has the needs. We're in 12 of the Renton schools, eight elementaries, the three middle schools, and this year, for the first time, I get to tell you about the high school program at Renton High. We have a full-time liaison there. We provide whole-child wraparound support. We build partnerships and connect students and families to the community resources that are here, all to stabilize that family, to stabilize that living environment, so the student has the ability to focus on learning. The students we serve have a variety of things going on in their life: emotional trauma, homelessness, crisis, unsafe conditions, major illnesses, parent incarceration or death, domestic violence. We serve, 100% of the students that we serve are at risk for dropping out, 93% live in poverty, 80% are students of color, nearly half are, live in single-parent families, 22% English-language learners, and 25%, 192 students are homeless students. This year, we've been focused on learning about the effect of trauma on student learning, and we have had a facilitator working with us and with the schools in Renton. We know that the students that we work with experience trauma, sometimes daily, surely multiple serious traumas that would level any one of us. Traumas such as abuse, or death of a parent, or incarceration of a parent. We've had a couple of times where one parent has shot and killed the other parent, and the kids wake up and they don't have any parents from there on, and they visit their remaining parent in jail or prison. Research says that these children with significant trauma in their life, their brain shuts down to learning. And as you can imagine, the brain goes into survival mode and protection mode, and at that point, there isn't any teacher, any curriculum, anything you can do to increase their math knowledge, or their reading skills, or anything like that. You've got to deal with where they are. And this is not a quick fix. It's not trauma that the next day kind of goes away, and they're back on track. It's trauma that takes a lot of time. It takes building relationships, it takes building resiliency back in those students, and the number-one way to do that is with mentors. We have been working with the school district and providing this facilitator to train whole schools of staff. So about six or seven schools now have gone through the training to understand the impact of trauma, and more importantly, to understand the strategies that they need to use to help these kids get back on track and become learners again. We are the homeless advocate in the 12 schools. We have a mentor program that serves 200 students, matching them with adult mentors. The average mentor stays with us for five years, which is quite a statement about the program. We also have a small-group mentoring program that's a transition program for 5th graders going into middle school. It works with them to identify their worries, their fears, what information they need, so that when they go to middle school, it's a smooth transition and a successful transition. Seventy-six students in seven schools are in that program. And the expansion that Communities and Schools of Renton has wanted for a long time, we thought it would be in elementaries, and given a couple of grants, we were able to expand in the secondary schools. At the same time that the Seattle Foundation grant was ending in the middle schools, we were able to, for this last year, pick up two of the staff, two of the three staff people to keep the program going in the middle schools. We are talking to the school district and hopeful that we will have someone in each of the middle schools next year to continue the program. The principal's rated it as one of their top priorities for the budget. And because of an AT&amp;T grant we received last year, we have the liaison in Renton High School. Her caseload currently is 65 students, individual students, plus the school-wide services that she's provided. She has fit in with the staff and is working side-by-side with all the administrators to meet the needs of these students. And for the first time, we can provide the Safety Net K-12. Most of our students in the elementaries go to Dymitt, go to Renton High School, and now we're there for the students and the families. We do this through our community partnerships. Renton is an incredible community and an incredibly giving community. We have, every year, 80 to 100 key partnerships going on that are serving these students, that are providing all the resources that we give out. We connect families to those resources, we leverage those resources so that we can give out coats, work with Rotary on that, school supplies, personal care supplies, totaling 100, over nearly $167,000 in donated resources that come into us in one year and go right back out the door to the students and the families. That allows us to provide resources beyond what we could ever do with the amount of staff that we have, or with our budget. A couple of weeks ago, Nicola at Renton High, our new liaison, and I met with three churches who came together, had heard about our liaison in the Renton High School, and came together in a partnership where the three churches want to work on adopting the students that , excuse me, that Nicola is working with. So she's, right away, has three very strong partnerships that will help her provide for their needs. Looking at some numbers, last year, we served 7,000 students with the school-wide services. That's all students in those schools receiving services, but the individual services, which we go much deeper into providing, 728 students received targeted, ongoing services that are based on their need. 190 students, 200 students, I think it was, received a mentor. This is a 21% increase over the last two years. We've been watching that number go up. It's not fast enough for us, but it's a good, healthy increase. And close to 1,000 students have received school supplies and warm coats this past year. As we look at this year, and we have a different database and a different data collection system, we are already serving 700 individual students, and when I total up the individual services that have been provided to those 700 students, it's over 6,500 services that are, individual services that have been provided. We track outcomes, and last year, the goals that were achieved, 91% of the students met their attendance goal, 82% met their academic goal and their behavior goal. We surveyed parents, mentors, students, and staff. 98% of the parents said their ability to help their child succeed in school increased. Remember the students and the families that we work with. These are not families that are engaged in the school, they are not families that have any more to give, and yet, they are saying that this is helping them, increase their child's success. 98% of the teachers felt their ability to help their students succeed increased because of CIS, our services. So the bottom line, and I say this to our audience on TV too, we need more mentors. So as Mara was here in January and said, "Please help us get mentors," I look to all of you, as you make contacts, to keep asking, keep mentioning it to people, directing them to us. We'd love to talk to anybody that is interested in being a mentor. There's surely many more students out there that need them. And we know that when we work together to reduce and eliminate the effects of trauma and poverty and disparity on learning, that we will see these same kids succeeding, excelling, and graduating, and that's our goal. So we want all these students to have the same opportunity that all the other kids in the schools have, and that's to be successful. I want to personally thank you for your support over the 20-year history of this partnership between the city, the school district, and CISR. It's what makes us successful, to have you. So thank you very much for this time.
Thank you, Sue. You know, I just want to mention that, as you just said, the city has had a strong partnership with CISR for a long time, and those of us that have been around have been able to see the results, and, you know, we can't say enough about what your staff and the volunteers do. And I gotta say, Marcy's a mentor. Don, were you a mentor? You've mentored everything else. We've had council members that have been very dedicated mentors. King Parker, Tony Nelson, I don't know if I, Dan Clausen. So we've had a lot of council members that have, you know, stepped up and have been valuable mentors for the program. So, anyway, we appreciate you coming out tonight. Council, have any comments? Yes, Marcy?
Just putting in my plug for mentors. It's not tutoring. It's showing up at the school, one hour, once a week, during the school year. You can't take 'em out, can't take 'em shopping or to McDonald's for lunch, you have to stay there, and it's basically what the child wants to do. And this is my 11th year, I think my seventh girl, because many years I've taken an elementary as well as a middle schooler, because there's such a need. And it varies what they want to do. One girl wanted to go out and play tetherball, and it took her 20 minutes of playing tetherball before she was calm enough on the inside to communicate with me. So what would that girl be like if she didn't have that? And she changed dramatically. So it's, thinking, I don't know if I want to tutor. We play games, we go out and shoot hoops. Yes, girls like to shoot hoops, too. I'm relearning four-square. Uno, didn't know how to play uno before. So the schools have a mentor closet or place where there's arts and crafts, and there's games, board games, there's balls, there's jump ropes and frisbees. You just take the cue from that child on that particular week, and it changes from time to time. But it's easy, and the big thing is, you just show up. And it takes a few weeks and sometimes a few months for that child to trust you, because they don't come from an environment of trust, and they've had a lot of disappointment. So it's just showing up when you say you will, week after week, and they'll go, "You're back." You really do show up every Wednesday at 11:00. That's all it takes. So that's my plug.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And if anyone is interested, there's, our contact information is on the screen.
Any other comments from council? Okay, Sue, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Yeah.
Okay, next item is Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network. Most of you have received a ballot in the mail and are wondering what that's for, so you're gonna learn all about it right now.
What a wonderful program that sounds like.
It is.
Really impressive.
I'll let you run it.
Okay.
Bless you.
Okay, so I'm from the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network, which is a mouthful, and basically, it's the replacement project for the existing public safety radio system. So this is a system that, when you call 911, this is a system that's used to actually dispatch police, dispatch fire, dispatch an ambulance. This is a system that the firefighters and the police would use to communicate at a big fire or a shooting event, and this is also the system they would use, in certain circumstances, to call back to their command staff, who would be handling the management of that incident. So that's what this is.
Sorry to stop you, because I know the city clerk is just about to crawl out of his chair. He needs to have you identify yourself for the record, so that we have it recorded.
Sure, I'm Marlon Blazinski, B-L-I-Z-I-N-S-K-Y, and I'm from the Puget Sound Emergency Radio Network Project.
Thank you.
Sure. So about a little less than 80% of our users are first responders, police, fire, schools also have radios. If there's a shooting at a school, they're not gonna, the cellphone system will be totally overwhelmed, so schools have radios, water districts, sewer districts, the county's public works departments, some other public works departments, so if a road is out, they have communications, no matter what else is going on. There are about 100 jurisdictions, and what I mean by that is, if you count the City of Seattle Police, the City of Seattle Fire, Seattle Engineering, all those folks, that's one jurisdiction. There are about 250 customers that get bills, and there's about 17,000 radios, which makes this one of the largest networks in the United States. It's used thousands of times every day. Every time the police talk to each other, fire talks to each other, they use this network. The problem is that the network is getting old. It was completed in 1997, and it's wearing out. And in addition to that, the vendor that sold us the system 20 years ago is no longer going to support the system after the end of 2018. What that means is, they're no longer going to do repairs, and they're no longer going to sell replacement parts. So those are the primary drivers for building a new system. There's also coverage problems with the system today. The county was just smaller when the system was designed back in 1992. There are both more people, and people live in more areas than they did, so the coverage is and is the best. And also, the capacity in large events is not as good as what we would like. So those are the things that we're targeting in the new system. The current system is owned by four parties, and there was actually a countywide ballot measure. The county wrote checks, one check to Valleycom, one check to EBSKA, which is the east-side equivalent of Valleycom, one check to the City of Seattle, and it kept a quarter of the money for itself. Each of those groups now physically owns part of the network, sites, electronic equipment, and the whole thing is tied together with a computer that makes it, for users, it looks like one seamless network, but it's actually has four owners. So this is the project to replace our system that's wearing out. It is a voice-only system. It's, some of you have heard about FirstNet, and I can answer questions about that if you'd like. This is not a broadband data system like you have on your cellphone. This is a voice-only system, and it's a voice system that's intended to never, ever, ever go down. That's the difference. It's intended for use by all agencies, all first responder agencies in King County. It also goes over, so, for example, Bothell goes into Snohomish County, the city will cover into Snohomish County, it will cover into Pierce County, where Auburn is, and so forth. But it's intended for all the agencies, all the first responder and other government agencies in the county. We'll build almost a totally new network, we'll reuse the sites that we can, but all the electronic equipment will be new, there will be new dispatch councils, and your service people will get radios, their radios replaced on a one-to-one basis at no cost. There'll also be training and testing that we may or may not ask you folks to participate in. One of our key drivers has been to have criteria that are measurable, and so we will be testing the system on 1/10 of a mile by 1/10 of a mile squares, which is a tremendous amount of testing, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. So the two most important lines here are the top two lines. As far as we can tell, there were no specifications for the current network. We've never been able to find any. I think what the county did was, they said, "Here's the amount of money, can you build, what can you build us for this amount of money?" And the system was then tested after it was built, and it covered 94% of the geographic area in the county when it was done. We are increasing that to 97%. And most importantly, if you look at the second line, what we have are, we have coverage targets for every city. Every city will be measured separately. Seattle will be measured separately from Renton, from Kent, from Auburn. So we have specifications, again, as I say, for each city, and the vendor will have to meet the testing targets for each city, so that we won't have big holes like we do now. That's happening in part because we're increasing the number of sites, but we're also just increasing the strength of signals. There are no in-building coverage specifications, but this should be much more powerful, and your police and fire should have much better coverage inside buildings than what they do The child capacity is just capacity measures. It's gonna be less likely to go down, because there's gonna be some geographic redundancy, and important for you, your folks will have better connections to folks like the Washington State Patrol and the Port of Seattle Police. Excuse me. Oops. Did I skip? Oh, well, I skipped a slide. I think that was the funding slide. So the county council has put a levied lid lift on the April 28, 2015 ballot. That levied lid lift is for...
Go back if you want.
Okay. Great, thanks. The levied lid lift is in the amount of, a maximum of seven cents per $1,000 of assessed value, so if you have a $400,000 house, that's $28 a year. It's a maximum of nine years. If we don't need all the money, we won't collect all the money. So it's a maximum of nine years. It's not necessarily nine years. And this is just what it would cost for the median-priced home in King County. Any questions about that? Or should, do you want me to wait till the end?
Council, any questions in regards to the funding? Okay? No?
There's been an informal working group that we call the Steering Committee that's been making policy decisions for this, and it's the four owners of the current system. So you are part owners of Valleycom, and the representative for Valleycom has been Laura Yuland, the Executive Director, who I'm sure you know. You recently passed an inter-local agreement that basically set up a more formal steering committee to oversee the implementation of the network itself. So there are just lots and lots of policy decisions to be made, and that's the group that makes the policy decisions. That group will also approve all major payments and deliverables as part of the construction process. The plan is that when the network is built and tested and ready to go, a new nonprofit organization will be created, and the county will sign over ownership of the network to this new nonprofit. Again, the members will be the same, as, basically as they are today. It'll be the EBSKA cities, the Valleycom cities, Seattle, King County, everybody will have the same vote, and votes will, there's no weighted voting, and it's, at this point, the decision is that everything has to be unanimous. So the last 20 years, it's worked as consensus, and the way we have it structured for the future, we'll have to continue to work by consensus, because everyone has a veto. So what does this mean for Renton? Well, you'll have stronger signals, it'll cover more of your buildings, you'll get your radios replaced on a one-for-one basis for operating radios that are on the system today. So this is an approximation for the number of radios that you have that are users of the system today. And as... And as I said earlier, it should improve the interoperability of the system with some other agencies, particularly the Washington State Patrol that are important for your officers.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Yeah, can you explain the five for schools? Is it just specific schools then, or they're...
Be for their school security officers.
Oh, got it, got it. Perfect, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Well, I kind of intimately know this system, and it's interesting that, it's hard to believe that I've been retired for almost 16 years. But, we started needing this radio system more than 20 years ago, and there's nothing more scary for a police officer, firefighter, anybody in emergency, whether it be one of our city workers, to be in an emergency situation and not have the damn radio work. You know, you get out there, you push the button, you expect somebody to hear you when you're yelling for help, and in this system, I can personally tell you, there's a lot of dead spots. And we've had officers that have been hurt because they're yelling for help, and nobody can hear them. And this new system should take care of that, as I understand, and I'm not as intimately aware of everything, but I've been in on some meetings, and that is a big issue. You get into, where is it more important than, well, to us, than to have a police radio get out of this building? And it's here, as far as I'm personally concerned, when I'm sitting up here, it's a council chamber. And there's times that it won't go out of this building. And it won't go, the emergency room at Valley Medical is another area that radios at certain points don't work. And let me tell you, you get in some of these hairy situations, and your radio doesn't work, so you can't call for help, or you don't know what the guy, your backup is doing. So, I put a real high priority, and I really, really, I personally know this is a system that we need to do an update. Plus, they are not, Motorola is not going to service this system. The parts aren't there. So, then what do we do? Then we're in a real emergency situation. So, this is a very, very important thing to all of us because you never know when we're going to have to dial 911 and want police or fire, or, you know, in the case, we forget public works a lot. But when something's going bad with the water or something, then you need, they need to communicate, it's just as important that they have the same system, so...
So, I'm going to just caution all of us...
Cut me off before I, that's why I'm stopping.
Because we're not, we're not in a position to oppose or support the initiative. We're just here to have Marlon give us...
Yeah, I understand that.
...information on the piece.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. ...
And I respect that. I did have a sort of a technical question though, for Marlon.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, so, I would like to understand, and I don't know if you can speak to this, but will these radios penetrate buildings better than the ones they're replacing? Because I understand that is where dead spots sometimes are.
So, the answer to that is yes. And one of the things that's an indication of that is the number of tower sites. I mean, just signals will be much stronger.
Okay.
You have problems in certain buildings because of the construction of the building. The primary problem being, you know, the same things that reflect the sun also reflect radio waves. But, the signal should be much stronger, and it should cover many, many, many more buildings than the current system does.
Good, thanks.
You can go ahead. Was, were you finished with your presentation, or?
I am.
Oh, you are, okay. Any other questions from counsel? Okay, Marlon, well, thank you very much for coming out. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on to administrative report, Mr. Covington.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, two items. The Tressel Bridge next to Maplewood Roadside Park at Cedar River Trail will be receiving some minor repairs this week through May 22. This historic former railroad structure is over 100 years old and receives a structural review every three years. The timber beams will be trimmed at their ends and receive a galvanized cap for weather protection. Contract will be setting up their work area on the outside of the Tressel Bridge, so there will be some equipment on the trail at times. Just encouraging people to use caution when they traverse the trail during this time. And due to the 2015 Seahawks 12K run at the landing next Sunday, the 19th, there will be road closures along southeast shore of Lake Washington Boulevard that morning. The streets involved are Lake Washington Boulevard North, Park Avenue North, North Eighth Street, and Logan Avenue North. Most streets will close around 8:30 a.m. and reopen at varying times. Folks can visit our website for more detailed information, which will give you specific intersection closure reopen times. We want to encourage people to try to plan their trips on Sunday morning accordingly, so they won't be too frustrated by the joggers and walkers. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
That's exciting. I can't believe it's been a year since, I mean, the time goes so fast. I do remember that there were people that got caught in neighborhoods and things last year. That run is so successful, it's so exciting. And I remember thinking it was overall a super success, but that there were people that came back later and said they were trying to make a left turn out of their neighborhood and couldn't do it. Are we taking any special, making any effort maybe to have crossing guards or something?
We have, we have people posted at every intersection. And when there's a break in the runners, we allow cars to get across.
Good, excellent.
But it can be, you know, when you get the large cluster of runners, it can take a few minutes before there's a break, so...
As long as we're finding a way to get them out, in and out, so that's great. Good.
Okay, thank you. No, nobody signed up for audience comment, move on to consent agenda. We have five items for a council consideration. Are there any items that council member would like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Seeing none, I move that the council approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman. The council approved the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Committee of the Whole has a committee report.
Committee of the Whole Committee Report, 2016 Solid Waste Contract. The Committee of the Whole concurs with the administration's intent to pursue a competitive process to procure the 2016 solid waste collection contract. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that we concur with the committee report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni. The council concur with the Committee of the Whole report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Person.
No unfinished business.
Okay, Ms. Palmer.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
The only person who worked this week was Councilmember Perez. Mr. Perez.
Waving some kind of report around down there.
Thank you, though. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Service Committee has three committees report to present tonight.
Okay, Community Services Committee Committee Report, Library Advisory Board Appointment. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm Mayor Law's appointment of Kim Unti to the Library Advisory Board for a term expiring September 1, 2017. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Remove approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Perez.
This is the first time that I do this.
That's absolutely fine.
I move that we concur with the report.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Perez, second by Ms. Palmer, that counsel concur with the Community Services Committee Report. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. I just want to say we're blessed to have Kim Unti on this committee. She's been a great community volunteer in so many ways for so many years. Kim, I'd like you to stand up so our cameraman can get the camera on you and the public can recognize you. Thank you very much for your service.
Okay, the next Community Services Committee Report is Renton Municipal Arts Commission Appointment. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to confirm Mayor Law's appointments to the Renton Municipal Arts Commission. Ms. Mary Kleimer for a term expiring December 31, 2015. Ms. Kimberly Echelman for a term expiring December 31, 2017. Ms. Adrian LaFaye for a term expiring December 31, 2017. And Mr. Neil Sheasley for a term expiring also on December 31, 2017. This is signed by the committee chair and vice chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Perez.
I move that the council concur with the report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Perez, second by Ms. Palmer, that counsel concur with the Community Services Committee Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Do you have any members that are with us tonight? Yes, not. That was perfect, Ms. Perez. We have one more, go ahead.
One more.
One more. The Community Services Committee Committee Report, 2015 Neighborhood Project Grant Applications. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve and authorize the following 2015 Neighborhood Project Grant Awards. First, South Renton Neighborhood Association. Planting trees within the neighborhood and to celebrate Arbor Day, $3,369. Starwood Homeowners Association. Install playground in the neighborhood common area, $19,888. Sorrento Homeowners Association. Install identifying signage at entrance into the neighborhood, $4,111. Victoria Park Homeowners Association. Install playground in the neighborhood children's park, $13,560. And finally, LaCrosse Homeowners Association. Install irrigation into the neighborhood community garden and add a blueberry patch and grape arbor, $4,326.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Perez.
I move that the council concur with the report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Perez, second by Ms. Palmer, that counsel concur with the Community Services Committee Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The eyes have it. Okay, moving on to resolutions and ordinances. We have two ordinances for second and final reading.
The first ordinance is regarding the 2006 Limited Tax General Obligation Refunding Bonds. An ordinance is the City of Renton, Washington, providing for the issuance of one or more series of limited tax general obligation refunding bonds of the city in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $14 million to refund certain outstanding limited tax general obligation bonds and to pay cost of issuing the bonds and delegating the authority to approve the final terms of the bonds.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman. That this ordinance be adopted as read requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
The eyes have it.
The final ordinance is regarding the amended budget, or the budget amendment. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the City of Renton fiscal years 2015, 2016 by annual budget as adopted by ordinance number 5737 in the amount of $66,949,826.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second?
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be adopted as read and requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Person?
Aye.
Ms. Palmer?
Aye.
Mr. Corman?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni?
Aye.
Ms. Perez?
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Eyes have it. Thank you, Jason. Moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Committee of the Whole has committee meeting next Monday, April 20, at 5:30. We have two items on the agenda. East Side Railroad Corridor Master Plan Update and Regional Issues. And that meeting will be in council chambers. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Finance Committee will meet next Monday, April 20, at 5:30 p.m., no, 4:30 p.m., excuse me, in the council conference room. Four topics, Riverview Park Bridge, Replacement Bid Award, Maycrick Property Acquisition, Transportation Division Staffing Increase, and vouchers. And that's all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Palmer.
Yes, the Transportation Committee is going to meet tomorrow, Tuesday, April 14, at 10 a.m. We have three items on the agenda. First one is Sustainability Plan Resolution. The second item is Kenny Dale Transportation Concerns. And three is Emerging Issues in Transportation. And then I also wanted to announce, I think I have concurrence with my fellow Transportation Committee members, that we're going to start meeting the second and fourth Tuesdays at 11 o'clock instead of 10. I think that'll help staff a little bit after being here Monday nights. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Corman?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. Taylor?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Pavoni.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Public Safety Committee meeting scheduled for April 20 has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to audience, oh, did I miss somebody? Oh, Ms. Perez, I'm sorry.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
You have no new business, okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on, audience comment, was anybody want to address the council?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. For the record, my name is David Della, Public Sector Manager for Waste Management. And, you know, I've been sitting in the audience for a long time, watching the proceedings with much interest. So, tonight I decided to comment. And I want to comment on the Committee of the Whole report by just saying, first of all, thank you very much for the opportunity, for the partnership that we've been able to forge with the City of Renton for the last 26 years. It's a long time, lots of accomplishments. And what we've been able to do together is create a success story of partnership forged around providing excellent service as well as looking at innovative ways to make sure that the city reaches its environmental sustainability goals. Our company and drivers who are on the front line every day, we serve Renton with pride. And we do that by doing everything possible to make sure that your customers are taken care of as far as waste collection, and that we make sure that we respond to service needs as much as possible every time. So, what has this partnership accomplished? A lot of things. First of all, the City of Renton is the only city around our region that has actually implemented every other week residential garbage and recycling collection. Now, I know that that was very tough at the very beginning, but you have been able to successfully do that and are a model for the region for other cities to do likewise, which not only saves money and resources for the ratepayers, but also, you know, provides great service that the ratepayers are asking for. You are also the highest residential waste diversion rate in King County. Currently, you're 67.7%, or 23,206 tons diverted from your waste stream. That is 46.4 million pounds. That's a lot of pounds to divert. You are also the regional leader in waste reduction, recycling, and waste prevention. With the least amount of garbage generated per household per week, you're at a mere 20 pounds in this city, which is the highest in King County. Since every other week collection, there's been a dramatic increase, a decrease in the annual tons of garbage generated per year, which is an average of 2,000 tons, less tons per year in your garbage. Those are all very important accomplishments that has kept the City of Renton ahead of the curve, on top of the heap, and that has been done through the partnership of your city and our company for many years. And we look forward to many more years of partnership. I think that, you know, there's a lot to be said about partnership and relationships. As a former elected official, I understand the need for you to do your due diligence to make sure that whatever services that you provide, that is for a fair price and for, you know, a fair competitive nature in the marketplace. But, you know, relationships and partnerships go a long way. And, you know, Waste Management stands ready as we go through the next period of process that you've outlined to continue the excellent service that we provided and to increase the services that you want in terms of recycling, move the needle on recycling in your business and multifamily sector, and also your residential population. And we can do this because we have the capacity, we've proven that, we have the equipment and resources... and resources ready to do that, and we have the relationships with the city, with the customers, and in the community to make sure that we meet the goals that you want to meet in the future. And we're standing ready to get this done, and we look forward to continuing the partnership, and we hope that as we go through this next process, that you consider the many years that we've worked to serve the customers, your customers, worked to build a relationship in the community, both on the curbside and outside the curbside in the community, and we look forward to continuing to work with you and continue to build that relationship. So thank you very much for the time that we spent, many years, and I look forward to continue to work with you in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corman.
Can I, I'd just like to make a comment to that, that I want to say, you know, thank you for all that, great service too, and you do set a really high standard. I mean, my view is that as we go into this bidding process, that others are going to have to really show that they can perform. And having been on council, I know several of us were when we rolled out the service with the Toters and the every-two-week service, and then we ended up with a big snowstorm and a lot of challenges, I thought that waste management had really worked hard to, you know, to be responsive and to make it work and to, and I think you, I think you do, you do own credit for a lot of the diversion of our waste stream and all of that, so, you know, you should be really proud of that. So I guess my thought is that as we look at these bids, others are going to have to really show us that, you know, that they, I mean, you're a fact to be that way, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. We're still trying to decide whether we want to be on top of the recycle heap or the other heap. What's the wish of the council?
Will we adjourn?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Prince. Will we adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?